Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radishevsky.
Here.
Mayor Pico. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the April 3rd, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of April 3rd, 2023.
Second. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Monarch Butterfly Day proclamation.
So today it's my pleasure to announce the Monarch Butterfly Day 2023, whereas Monarch Butterfly is an iconic North American species, who from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans and where cities, whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play in saving the Monarch Butterfly and the Village of Orland Park has played a leadership role by establishing two monarch wayfinding habitats at the Village Hall Green Roof and Stellwagen Farm Prairie and participating in the Monarch Village USA program. Whereas every citizen of Orland Park can make a difference for the monarch planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, and play. Whereas on behalf of the people of Orland Park who have already joined me in creating a healthy habitat for these magnificent butterflies, I am honored for Orland Park to be an official Monarch Village USA, and I encourage other city officials across the nation to stand with me so that the Monarch Butterfly will again flourish across the continent. Now therefore, I Keith Pico, Mayor of the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties do hereby proclaim the last day of April, April 30th, as Monarch Butterfly Day in the Village of Orland Park and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect the Monarch Butterfly and promote their well-being for the benefit of present and future generations. And I will also add that it is very critical for pollinators, for all of our plants, and for our own health. So please, you know, protect our habitat and keep things as nice as you can.
Earth Day and Arbor Day proclamations.
This is probably better with the actual microphone, although it carries so well here. So proclamation, Earth Day Arbor Day 2023, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, hence the Morton Arboretum. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut, heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper wood for, paper and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas the Village of Orland Park has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 35 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation, desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I Keith Pico, Mayor of the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day and April 28th, 2023 as Arbor Day in the Village of Orland Park, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our environment and promote the well-being of present and future generations. And might I also add that probably the most important thing you can do for those of you who who completely buy into carbon and all of that, the most important thing you can do is plant trees, because they actually generate oxygen and take carbon out of the air. So plant trees, they're beneficial in many, many ways. And as someone who was a certified arborist for oh, about 17 or 18 years, they, you know, take care of them as well in an urban environment, take the time to take care of them, because they'll last a lot longer and you're gonna have a lot less problems if you do. You spend a little bit of money to take care of them, so please do that.
Accounts payable through April 17, 2023 approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from April 4th, 2023 through April 17th, 2023 in the amount of $3,719,691.38.
Second.
Call or roll. Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item A payroll for March 31st, 2023 approval. Item B, Class 8 real estate tax incentive, 15721 Harlem Avenue, Orland Park. Item C, cancellation of July 3rd, 2023 committee, the whole, and board and trustee meetings, you're welcome. Item D, monument signs, Southwest Highway and Will Cook Road and Southwest Highway and 135th Street, approval. Item E, pavement management system update service, 2023 to 2026 award. Item F, disposal of village equipment online auction, public works department ordinance. Item G, Sportsplex locker room renovation project. ITB 23-028 rejection. Item H, spoil removal services contract. Item I, concrete slab raising, ITB 23-036 award. Item J, 2023 asphalt pavement patching bid award. Item K, Centennial Park West Venue, 15635 Park Station Boulevard, variance and special use ordinance approval. Item L, amend Title VII, Chapter 14, number of massage licenses, Orland Park. Item M, intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Orland Park and the South Suburban Emergency Response Team, CERT. Item N, uniform services. Item O, Metro East Townhomes ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area and providing for a public hearing. Item P, Queen of Hearts Raffle License.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to put item J on the floor and approve items A through I and approve items K through P.
Second. Call or roll. Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
2023 asphalt paving, pavement patching bid award. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve awarding ITB 23-0322, 2023 Asphalt Pavement Patching to McGill Construction LLC of Frankfurt, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $456,425, which is $306,425 plus $150,000 contingency, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and to authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
Call or roll. Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
I abstain, I have a family member that works for a non-awarded bidder.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Public Works, Village of Orland Park Municipal Basin Phase 1.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the stewardship of Villageville and Park Municipal Basin Phase 1 to Davie Resource Group of Elmhurst, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $161,890. Authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comment?
Call or roll. Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Baraco's Pizza Inducement Agreement. Water Loss Control Program, RFP.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Radishewski.
I move to approve awarding RFP 23-029 Water Loss Control Program to Emmy Simpson Company, Inc. of Valapreso, Indiana, for a three-year contract with an option to extend two additional years in an amount not to exceed the board approved budgeted amount and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments? So I know we only have a single bidder here, George, and that's because they're really the only game in town for doing this type of work, generally speaking. They're usually always the only bidder for these types of projects, correct?
That's correct. Call or roll. Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Baraco's Pizza Inducement Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve a sales tax sharing inducement agreement with Baraco's Pizza as outlined above, pending approval of all village planning, zoning, and building requirements, and authorize the village manager to execute the inducement agreement subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments? So this is our standard restaurant backfill inducement agreement of tax sharing up to 25% of the, of the costs associated with, the capital costs associated with entering the building and construction of the building. And it's great to see Baraco's opening a second location and to see that location being used. Call or roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye, and might I add too that this inducement agreement has actually worked really, really well. We have very few restaurants now that still need to be backfilled, just a couple. So we've really filled a bunch of restaurants with this inducement agreement. So job well done by everyone for putting this together.
Centennial Park West Concert Series Stage, Sound, Lights, and Labor.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve entering into a contract with Soundworks Productions to provide stage, sound, lights, labor, and backline at a cost of $24,950 plus a 10% contingency of $2,495 to accommodate artist changes and/or additions for a total not to exceed $27,445 for the June 10th, July 15th, and August 10th, 2023 concert series, and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and to authorize village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
And I will, the only comment I'll make here is that our concerts this year will be in the parking lots. It'll be a little bit of a change, because you'll see a lot of construction going on out there, which is great. And next year they'll be in the permanent stage, which will be fantastic, so really looking forward to that. But I think we have some really good acts lined up this year. They're all, all cover bands, but they'll all gonna be great, and I think a lot of fun. So I'm looking forward to seeing everyone out there. Any comments or questions? Call or roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Amendment Title VII, Chapter 4, Retail Liquor Establishments Ordinance. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapter 4 of the Orland Park Village Code with regards to retail liquor establishments.
Second.
And just so the board knows, this is being done so that we can accommodate those people who want to come use our, our venues for events, and then we have a separate liquor license established for them to be used that is in compliance with the liquor codes. Call or roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Municipal Electrical Aggregation Program. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Renewal of the Municipal Aggregation Program for Electrical Load. Second.
And so the three board members who've only been here for two years, we've always used, we've used ComEd since you've been here and used their rates. Prior to that, we would aggregate electrical, which I know is confusing for residents, but basically it allows us to get better pricing for the residents on a whole, because the projected pricing is much better than ComEd's. So we've been able to do that and save millions, save residents millions. And they can still opt into ComEd if they want, but it doesn't really make much sense, because it doesn't change how anything's delivered. And then what we did for a couple of years is we were really unable to aggregate, but we were able to get incentives to use renewable energy credits. So we did that and got a couple hundred thousand dollars a year towards LED lighting and some other things that we wouldn't have been able to do. The last couple of years we've been with ComEd, because, you know, that was the most cost efficient. Well, it's, it's my understanding now that NYMEC thinks they can get us better pricing again, and I see the head nods there. So we're, this authorizes us basically to go out and see what we can get for rates, and then it will be brought back to us, and then we will make a decision as a board as to what the best, the best path forward is. Did I get that all right? And that's, Adam Hoover is here with NYMEC, and he can answer any of those questions, but you got exactly, that's the plan.
There is, I would say there's one small change, we already have options for you.
Okay, all right, great.
Rates at seven and a half cents. Just to be clear, the one, so we have rates at seven and a half cents for your residents. The ComEd rate, and by the way, we went to multiple suppliers, MC Squared, who you previously did an aggregation deal with, so is the one with the lowest supplier again. The only reason we're not saying, let's move forward today, let's sign, let's take this advantage of this, is because even though the current ComEd rate is 9.7 cents today, the ComEd releases their rates for June to June, and they'll release it on May 10th. So we think the rates are gonna go down. They're at 9.7 now, we think they're gonna go down. We've heard anywhere from down to seven and a half, which is where we're at, to eight and a half. So what we're asking for right now is just to kind of, A, answer any questions that you have, because once May 10th comes out, we're gonna be pretty busy. And that would also allow for the board and the village to kind of take advantage to have the most guaranteed savings. So if May 10th comes, or when May 10th comes, and we find savings, we will present something to you all, and you guys can move forward if you move forward with this ordinance. To be clear, if there are not savings for the residents on May 10th, and let's say the ComEd price comes down to seven cents, and we cannot beat that, we will inform you guys, but we would not encourage you to move forward, and we would continue with ComEd. So really, we're asking for when, and we think if, or we are, you know, hopeful that when May 10th comes around, we'll be able to find you savings, if you guys would be willing to move forward then. That's kind of our question at hand for you.
Any other questions?
Call or roll. Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Are there any members of the public here to speak? Board comments.
Trustee Compass.
So we've hit that, the end of the special holiday season. And, you know, with that, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy Easter, for those that celebrated both last Sunday and yesterday. Rabidhan Mubarak, and happy Passover. I know for Bill, I'll also throw in Patriots' Day, and I think 2A Day is today as well. This quarter, the Village's Employee Leadership Core Strength Recognition Program has named 15 staff members who have abundantly demonstrated positivity through offering genuine encouragement and an infectious energy that makes the workday more enjoyable here in the village. Those recognized were Sophia Aduce, Jeannie Atkinson, Ryan Barth, Lisa Contreras, Vince Doria, Leslie Godfrey, Mike Gross, Matt Hannah, Linda McTaggart, Brian Mohalsen, Tom Ogleszolik, Keith Rush, Karen Rittenbacher Wilson, Josephine Wymank, Brooke Wendell, and I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's names. Thank you all for being a source of happiness for everyone here on staff. And then lastly, I'd like to congratulate and thank trustees Katsinas, Healy, and Malani. Fortunately, as of late with so many campaign seasons, there's been far too much time, there are folks with far too much time and far less sense that would prefer to engage in tactics of personal destruction over reasoned discourse. Large majority of what we discuss up here as a board, as you saw tonight, is far from controversial. It's operational in most cases. However, for simply serving your community, you have been frivolously sued, personally maligned, and even had your family members tarnished with file robocalls, extortion letters, and the like. Each of you take on the work of being a trustee with passion and perseverance. This is not our day job, yet we are no less committed to the output of this village. Orland Park's continued success is our only benefit from all of our hard work today. Your commitment to serve again, considering the ongoing negativity and personal attacks is a testament to the strength of your character. I look forward to continuing to work with you all over the next two years. Thank you.
Trustee Malani.
What would a board meeting be without talking about cheese and wine night this weekend?
Meat and cheese.
Meat and cheese, meat and cheese. But I believe it's sold out, though, so, you know, we're gonna have a great night, I think. I'm looking forward to it. But, you know, looking back, you know, over the last four years, yes, we have endured a lot. As staff, you guys have endured a lot, because we came in with some bold ideas, and we implemented them, and you guys didn't miss a beat. There's nothing that we can do up here without you guys. So we definitely appreciate everything you have done the last four years as well. And looking at the things we've done together, we've, you know, eliminated pensions for elected officials. We've, you know, expanded our road programs. We expanded our parks and how fast we repaired parks. We, you know, have done so much for the village. We fought the mandates for COVID. We fought against the Safety Act. We fought against the, you know, ridiculous demands of the state's attorney's office. All of these different things that have come up over the last four years, and what have we done in Orland Park? We persevered, and we grew. And we're still a place to live, work, and play. So thank you guys, everybody up here, and thank you to all the staff as well that have helped us along the last, next, last four years, and we're looking forward to four more, so thank you.
Trustee Katsinas.
Wanted to thank the Orland Park voters who came out and voted and gave me the opportunity to serve four more years with trustee Malani and trustee Healy. So thank you very much.
Trustee Reardon.
Thanks. Congratulations to trustees, as Sean put it much more eloquently than I could, but I've seen the dedication over the last two years and really even the two years before I was on the board. You've done some great things together, and it's been a pleasure working with all three of you. We had some great weather last week, which was fantastic, and it was a little cold this week, but it just reminded me of the problems that arise in the summer that happened on Saturday night down in the city of Chicago. City, it was a once beautiful, lovely place. I've been working there for 28 years, going downtown. I lived down there during law school, and I love the city for so many reasons. But seeing just the very beginning of some warm weather, and to see the mayhem that's caused, caused, puts our, you know, puts the police in Chicago, the fire department, the EMTs, everybody at risk down there. And then to hear some of the politicians come out and say that this is some sort of a protest, or that they have nowhere else to go, or they have nothing, that this should be allowed. Now again, they pay lip service to the danger, to the property, you know, damage, to the cars, to the visitors, the tourists that got assaulted. The videos you're seeing that are coming out are absolutely insane. So I love spring, it's a great time, baseball, kids, you know, out, summer coming. But this, it just reminds me of what's out there, and something needs to be done in the city. That's all.
Trustee Healy.
Mr. Mayor, if there's anybody out there who I haven't told, then it's my birthday coming up in May 6th, and I'll be 70 years old. And to follow up on Brian's point, I don't know if, you know, Chicago used to be known as an international destination for shopping, commerce, trade. In my lifetime, will it ever be, achieve those, that success again? I don't think so. The leftist socialist communist movements in Chicago seem to be taking a deeper and deeper route. And to say that we here in Orland Park are impervious to it is, I mean, we can try and keep our, our values where they are, but you know, it's gonna be tough. We pride ourselves on being a family community, and where law and order is the, is the rule of the day. It's gonna be a tough battle to, to maintain that, but I think we've got the people here to do that. Just one other thing is that during that recent election, a couple weeks ago, I was dismayed, to say the least, by the level of hate and vitriol I experienced with a lot of the voters in Orland Park. I went to a meeting at the library, and also just outside with voters and other people of the election precinct, just, the, the level of hate and vitriol is just, I mean, goes along with the time, I'm not willing to take that, but again, this is supposed, we're supposed to, you know, it conflicts with my view of a family values for this place. So all I can say is to remind people and to, you know, live your life with some virtue, and, you know, hold your, you know, hold your dignity up, and practice, you know, try and get through to some of these people who seem to be lacking common sense, the rational thinking of some of these issues. Anyway, I hope that there's better days ahead for the electorate, and that's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Trustee Radishewski.
I too want to say congratulations to trustee Malani's, Katsinas', and Healy. Thank you for all that you've done, and thank you for continuing to step up, just with all the negativity, the things that are said against you, your families, and to continue to serve your community. It really does show a lot about your character. Definitely want to say happy birthday to Bill, and I'm bummed that I'm gonna miss your birthday. So I hope it's a, I hope it's a good one.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
So I, I too am gonna comment a little bit on Chicago, but as, as I heard the comments from the trustees, it made me think of a time. So as some of you know, I was chairman for, chairman of Illinois Vets for Energy for a number of years. And we used to go to, to Washington DC every year to lobby the Senate and, and House on some energy-related issues, particularly energy security being an important part of national security. All veterans, and there were about 26 or 27 states involved, and they would always ask for updates at our dinner. And whenever they would mention Illinois, there would be laughter and giggles throughout the, the room because of how poorly managed the state is. And I remember saying, "Don't laugh." Illinois has, has a world-class city, at least we did at that time. We're the transportation hub for air, for rail, and for roads in the country. We have a freshwater resource that the entire world would kill for. We have the farmland- We have the farmland that every state would kill for, and we have energy resources in the southern part of the state that any state would want. We have it all, and we've managed to completely screw it up through mismanagement. And I said, "That is a microcosm of what is happening in the United States," and we've seen it. We've seen us go from $3 billion, $3 trillion in debt in 2000 to $32 trillion in debt, and the latest budget is spending another half a trillion more than last year where we, and just keeps increasing the deficit. And by the next 10 years, our deficit's supposed to go up another $20 trillion? Illinois is the microcosm of the United States. They're following our lead. We need to change things. I do want to thank everyone who threw their hat in the ring in the recent election. Everyone on this dais understands it is not easy, and I applaud you all for the effort. I congratulate all of you who won, and I am hopeful that you will all do what is in the best interest of the people of Orland Park, just like these trustees, the clerk, and I do. Congratulations to Sidney, Mike, and Bill for their reelections. It's well deserved. You've done a fantastic job the last four years. He's not here tonight, but I especially want to thank Rich Miller for his efforts. The night after the election, which unfortunately he lost, I was fortunate to be able to attend the 100 Club Annual Award Ceremony where he and Leo were given the Rich Kozick Memorial Award for all the work they do with surviving families of first responders. Firefighters in Highland Park were also honored, and I recall when that horrible incident happened, Rich spending almost a week up there with survivors and victims. It was an honor to be able to watch him receive this award. His family and his children should be proud. I'm proud. Our board should be proud. Everyone that works with him should be proud. I also want to thank him for throwing his hat in the ring to run for Fire Protection District. I sat next to Chief Rossi that day, and as I watched Rich receive the award, and it was the night after the election, I was literally brought to tears, thinking about the horrible things that firefighters from the Orland Park Fire Protection District and the Chicago Fire Department said about him in front of pole locations. Those individuals are an embarrassment to their profession. We've all seen what is going on in Chicago. I, like Brian, have always loved the city of Chicago. I can't say that's true anymore. It's become lawless, and I have to recommend to our residents, explore Orland Park and neighboring communities and enjoy all they have to offer and not put themselves at risk by going to Chicago. Those firefighters from Chicago that came out here to trash one of our Orland Park natives and a member of our police department, they should be ashamed. Those firefighters both live and work in the city of Chicago, and they should spend time trying to fix their own backyard rather than coming here and try to turn a great community like Orland Park into the dumpster fire like Chicago. Tomorrow through Thursday, I will be in Springfield, talking to legislators on several issues, but primarily along with other mayors, I'll be talking about restoring LGDF, which you've heard me talk about a lot. The state dropped its sharing 12 years ago from 10% to less than 6% and has cost the village of Orland Park nearly $50 million. It has hurt us a lot, but it has nearly destroyed some of the communities in the south suburbs that these same legislators purport to care so much about. Last year, it was the Senate President and Governor specifically to stop this from being restored. It is time for the legislature to put the people first and override the governor, and frankly, with a $4 billion trust fund, he has no idea how real Americans and citizens live. I will also be talking to them about a recent horrible bill that was passed by the Senate and hopefully will not pass the House. Two of our senators, Senator Cunningham and Hastings, voted for a bill that makes it illegal to search a vehicle if the vehicle has an open container of cannabis. Chief, I got a question for you. If you have an open container of alcohol, can your car be searched? So let me get this right, open container of alcohol, we can search your car, but an open container of drugs that are recently legal, you can do whatever you want. To put this in perspective, 80% of the, about 80% of the searches that involve an open container of cannabis lead to other large amounts of drugs or illegal guns. Approximately 50% of the over 200 criminals with guns that we have proactively removed from the streets and kept Orland Park residents safe are because of these searches. They are taking that tool away to allow people to just violate the law and put us at risk. It is high time that they stop trying to turn every suburb into a dangerous place like Chicago, but this is what we are up against. I am committed, and this board is committed to keeping Orland Park safe and self-sufficient so we don't have to rely on the state or the county. Our residents deserve no less. I will report back to you two weeks from now with what I learned this week. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Compass.
I move to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, security procedures to respond to a danger to the safety of the public or village staff or property, C, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village or when found by the board[1762.91]